Good morning. Want to call in session the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for the Tuesday, December 12, 2017 meeting. And we want to thank all the folks who've joined with us. I know we have some special presentations and recognition this morning, and we'll get to those in just a moment. And certainly as we enter into the final two sessions of the board for the calendar year, we've got a very full agenda today. And I know we have both morning and afternoon items. And so, again, we appreciate your patience as we work through some of those items. But we will get to our recognitions in just a moment. So with that, want to call upon our clerk Florence Evans. Please call and roll into any notations and announcements, and then we'll get right into the agenda.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thanks.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 15, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Okay, thanks. Flo, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 54. For item 13, you are adopting an ordinance establishing the schedule of fees and charges for voter registration and elections. You waive reading on this item on December 5. And that is all that I have for my clerk notes.
Okay. I don't have anybody signed up on any consent items, but if you do wish to address any item in the consent calendar outside of our presentations, please make sure our clerk gets a request form here in just a few moments. Otherwise, we're going to act on that. But I will turn to my colleagues. I'll start to my right. And Ms. Peters?
Yes, thank you. I'd like the record to reflect. I'm recusing myself from items 2, 29, and 30 due to a potential conflict. And then I would like to ask for item 11 to be heard at 2:00 PM so I can get some answers, questions I still have. Thank you.
Okay, 2, 29, and 30. All right, Ms. Ross?
None, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Serna? Okay. I did want to just, I know we got some correspondence on item 32, so I, we certainly can leave it on the consent calendar, but I did want to just ask your question of staff on that. And those were, that was the item that I wanted to speak to, so.
Item 32 approved first amendment to agreement for lease of real property for recreational purposes with the Sacramento Area Modelers Incorporated.
Okay. I don't know, is Jeff Lederman here? Yeah, hey, Jeff. Jeff, I know the Parks Commission, and you and I had a chance to speak actually on Friday, acted on this last week, and that was transmitted to the board yesterday, your comments and summary of the Commission's actions. I wanted to, again, I know we've received certainly on behalf of the modelers, several comments in support of extension of the lease, and that's your recommendation, the Commission's recommendation.
Correct.
I wanted to be clear, though, about that, about the park site. The park site itself is 360 acres, has some natural areas. Obviously, the area that's occupied by the modelers is confined to an area on the eastern edge of the, of the park, but their area of impact or influence is probably maybe the entirety of the acreage. I don't know where they fly over exactly.
Sure.
So, in the lease, it calls out for a very modest amount, certain responsibilities for the modelers. Do they have responsibility for all the entirety of the park, or does our relative to fence lines and to, again, I don't know, I know we have one well, maybe there's other wells on the property and so forth. So what responsibilities? Could you do a quick overview?
Yes, the quick overview is that they do have the responsibility of fence maintenance for the entirety of the property, as well as the street frontage along Florin. And I believe that's Florin there.
It is always Florin.
Yeah. And they also support the department with some tree trimming effort when they're able. So our department, there are a number of trees along the frontage there. We'll go do some tree maintenance, and we coordinate that with the modelers. And they come out and support our staff in those efforts. If there's significant maintenance responsibilities, damage to the property outside of their activity, then we would work with the modelers to identify who the appropriate responding party would be, whether it be the department or the modelers in those case. We have occasion where, you know, four-wheel-drive vehicles will break down the fence and then access the property. And generally, we have repaired those fence intrusions in those cases.
What about other legitimate, either authorized usages of the park itself? Again, it's pretty much a natural area, and, but there might be some group that would wish to use that. The gate at the Florin Road entry to it, is that solely used in, under the authority of the, of the SAMs group? Or can we grant authorization and entry at a time for others? And how is that done?
So that would be done through my office. We have multiple locks on that front gate, so the department continues to have access to the property should we need to. We have not had occasion, since I've been here in the last six years, to have other activities other than the Sacramento Area Modelers out on the property. But we could coordinate that with the modeler, should there be a request to do so.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thanks, Jeff.
Sure.
Okay. The only questions I had, then.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yes.
I do want to point out two other things. You guys are dropping item 34 and 35. The agenda was noted for that. Item 35 is the Iown Road Bridge Replacements over Buckeye Creek and Willow Creek. And item 34 is the McKenzie Road Bridge Replacement over Laguna Creek. It was bids to be received. So those two items are being dropped and were noted on the agenda.
Okay. I appreciate you calling those out. And I just would, by way of note, I did have a chance to brief with transportation staff yesterday. I understand, because these have been in the works for some years now, and that, as I mentioned to Mr. Gill in my briefing as well, that I would remain concerned about sequencing if we get too many bridge replacement projects in any given season or two seasons because of some of the access in rural areas. Recognizing these two projects, we're ready to go, ready to bid, and that part of it, I guess, is the flow of dollars from federal, state sources to us. And again, I support dropping items, but in the event that we get stacked up in this, in our sequencing, then we need to look at our timing as it relates to any, because there are several other bridge projects that are in the works as well. So, okay. With that, then, I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Motion to second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, and then noting, holding item 11 till the afternoon session, and Supervisor Peters recusing herself on items 2, 29, and 30. So, nothing further, and no one signed up to speak? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. All right. And then we do have some presentations, and I guess maybe just a little bit out of order, but I'm going to invite our poet laureate to kind of start our meeting, and then we'll get into presentations. So I'm going to invite Indigo Moore, who was here very early in 2017, and graces with some of his prose. And certainly, we thank him for his ongoing efforts to bring, bring some words of wisdom, and certainly thoughtful words to our community event. So, Indigo, we welcome you, and again, would allow you opportunity to offer some comments this morning, so.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor this past year. And we'll say it's, yeah, there's a lot to be done, and there's a lot that's been done. I'm very happy for this opportunity, and very honored to be a part of everything that all of you and many of the people in this room have done to make sure we remember the humanity that also exists, and all the rules and regulations that we have to abide by and pass. Recently, I had the great honor of being part of the homelessness and hunger celebration and awards ceremony. And again, I was reminded by how much all of you do to try to make sure that more is done to remember that these people are a part of who we are. I lost my brother to AIDS after he had lost his house and lost everything and spent time on the streets. And I would just like to take a moment, as you know, poets are normally brief, I'll try to stay with that, and recite a poem that I had the opportunity to read at that ceremony. "I am told it was moonlight that ripened your failing heart until it finally cracked, sent the clock hands spinning off your flesh. I was a coward, still 3,000 miles away, convincing myself that if I came at all, I could never catch the dying hour. Forgive me, brother. For decades, your name has stretched my tongue to breaking, but love and pain often anguish logic. Long ago, on a night like this one, I watched Uncle Rocket a coyote skyward with a fistful of buckshot. It slammed to the ground, twisted, skidding across the grass. Somehow, it didn't know it was supposed to be dead. Front legs pawed the air, as if it had been leveled by nothing more than errant moonlight. Chicken feathers lined its muzzle. It mewled, eyes tunneling through me to the underbrush where its mate stood, cross-haired down Uncle's barrel, and already dead by every book and clock. The mate stood mesmerized, not knowing that in this world, every fool carries a twin heart. Bang! I shouted, and the underbrush went wild with the mate's running. Still, if animals have souls, too, die that night. Uncle cursed me under the killing sky. Why, boy? Why did you do that? You know she'll hit the coop later. This is my understanding of the fear and silence of these wounded knights. The moon snares in the sweet spot of the throat, and everything and everyone that lives on is trapped in love." Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Indigo, for sharing those words, and for us to reflect on during the holiday season, and certainly in our relationships with, with one another and humanity, and for your thoughtful presentation this morning. So we wish you well, and thank you for, again, being with us this morning. So, thank you very much. Okay. With that, then, we will move to our presentations, and we have a couple others. We have one by our DART team, as well as on, we have a resolution recognizing Officer Lee Murray. And I know we have a number of officers here, so let's, let's take that recognition for the Officer Murray, if we could call that. Item 57.
Okay. Presentation of res-
Oh, we'll do all three, oh, we'll do all three at the same time. Okay, we have several presentations, so we'll do that. Okay.
So I'll call all three in?
Yeah, we'll call all three, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so item 57, 58, and 59, presentation of resolution recognizing Officer Lee Murray on the occasion of his retirement with the California Highway Patrol, recognizing Officer David Cooper on the occasion of his retirement with the California Highway Patrol, and recognizing Lieutenant Bob Barkley on the occasion of his retirement with the California Highway Patrol.
Okay. We're losing a lot of years of service here, I think, for this pending retirement. So, Mr. Kennedy's going to do us the honors here. Patrick?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It's a real honor to be here today, to honor these three, what I consider really heroes. If you think about it, we all know that the California Highway Patrol, the role that they play throughout the state, but most people don't realize the role that they play in unincorporated counties, and that they are just as much law enforcement to our unincorporated county as our own deputies. And these gentlemen here have served the people of California. And I say that quite literally. If you, I'm not going to read all the whereas, but if you were to read these resolutions, you would see that they have served in just about every region of California among the three of them. And they've done it not only for, you know, with, with great aplomb and, and protected the residents of California, but they've done it cumulatively for almost 80 years. And, you know, it's with, it's with great honor that I represent the County of Sacramento in thanking you and congratulating you upon your retirement. I must say that it's always a little uncomfortable presenting retirement certificates to people who look younger than I do. But we, we wish you well, and thank you for your commitment to public service and to protecting the people of California. Thank you.
Well, we have a wide viewership on Channel 14, so this is your opportunity to talk to the rest of the world and tell us what you're going to do in retirement, or if you want to share anything else about your career. We certainly, again, we honor and recognize all three of you today.
Just a few words. Thank you very much for having us this morning. And these resolutions, they're very heartwarming for all three of us, and we really appreciate it. I, myself, have worked in Sacramento County several times over my career, moving throughout the state. I've come back here and spent my last six months here, ending my career, which is a good place to work. And I've always enjoyed it. A lot of it's from what you guys do in this, in this county, and keeping it one of the best places to work in the state. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the honor of being here. And, I don't know, it feels good to be wanted and appreciated. I grew up in the area, and I did leave to Southern California for a short time, came back, been, came back to Sacramento in 2000, so I've been here for quite a long time. My family's from the area. My great-grandfather was a Sac City firefighter. Died in a fire in 1929, unfortunately. But, yeah, Sacramento's home. Been for a long time for my family, so thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it. Thank you for having us here this morning. I've been on for quite a few years in the South Sacramento area, for about 22 years. I grew up in Sacramento and decided to come back. This is where I felt comfortable and always called it home. Long-lasting career, a lot of good people that I've worked with in multiple areas of California. And the state of California will be well off with people that will replace us. So, thank you very much.
Great. I think they want to get a picture with all of you. Michael, you can get, if you want to get.
Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Well, thank you all. Just before you leave, is there any introductions you wanted to make? You have, I see maybe some other family members, so if you'd like to, you can point out anybody.
Selective speakers.
No? Okay. All right. You're just all, you're supported by family and friends and colleagues. And so, again, we thank all of you for your service in keeping helping roads and streets and byways in this county and our community safe. So, thank you all for being here, and congratulations on your retirement. You bet. Okay. We had a chance to recognize some of our other folks who serve this community as, as well, and do it in a tremendous capacity, working with our high patrol, and our sheriffs, and law enforcement, and our fire personnel. And so we'll call our next item, and that's our DART team presentation. So Flo, you want to?
We do have a service award. Do you want to go there?
Oh, you haven't, I'm sorry. Okay.
So, item 55, recognizing Mona Mani Sayavong for 25 years of service with Human Assistance.
Okay. So our DART folks, hold this for a second. One more presentation, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jeanette Long. I'm a program manager with the Department of Human Assistance, and it is my pleasure to be here this morning to recognize Mona Mani Sayavong for 25 years of service to the County of Sacramento, all of them being spent with the Department of Human Assistance. So we've been very lucky to have her for her entire career. And I just want to say a few things. She started as an eligibility worker determining eligibility for applicants of aid for CalWorks, CalFresh, Medi-Cal. She's been through a lot of change with the department, multiple computer systems, different changes in aid and eligibility, and she's just rolled with all the changes. And she's always been here to serve our customers. For the first six years, she was an intake worker, as I mentioned. For the last 19 years, she has supported the customers in employment services caseloads, as well as the eligibility programs of CalWorks, Food Samson, Medi-Cal. She was also a member of the Asian and Pacific Islander Caucus for almost 20 years during her career, and also served as an officer of the caucus for two years. I know she has told me that one of her greatest pleasures was heading the organizing, organizing the fundraising for what actually became the first scholarship offered by the APIC Caucus. And she was very proud of her commitment and her contributions to the caucus. She has also volunteered for the department's translation team, assisting when translation services were needed to better serve our Asian customers. It really is an honor for me to present you with this certificate to recognize your 25 years of service to our department, as well as your constant dedication to improving the lives of the families that you have served. Thank you, Mani.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations on 25 wonderful years, Mona.
Thank you. Today, I'm very honored to be here to accept my award, 25 years of service working for Sacramento County. The luck against government agency in the county. I learned so much from a customer. I learned so much from the training required by the county. I become, I have knowledge. I become smarter in my own light. And thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Jeanette, my boss, my program manager, to make the ties to come here, present me the award. And thank you for the director, Ed Edward, to be here to support. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you, too. Somebody want to have a picture, maybe Anne can get in a picture with them. Come on down, Anne, let Steffi take a picture, too, so.
Picture time. Oh, yeah, hold up, hold up your.
Congratulations. Thanks for all you do for the people of the county of Sacramento as well, so. Okay.
Okay. Next, we have item 56, drowning accident rescue team. It's the DART presentation.
Okay. I think John Mohammed and some of the members are going to give us a presentation, kind of tell us a year in summary, but also, I think, remind all of us the good work that goes on in helping to rescue and respond to incidents in our community. So, with that, I'm going to turn it to you, gentlemen. You can introduce yourselves and your team here. And I know you have, I think, a brief, did you have a PowerPoint or just a slide presentation?
Pardon me?
Do you have a PowerPoint?
No, we do not.
Oh, just to add that.
We did, we did provide you with a-
Right.
-small performance.
Yeah, we got that. I didn't know if you were going to, okay. Great. So, it's all yours.
Good morning. It is an honor to be able to speak in front of the board. We appreciate you giving us some time to speak with you with regards to our activities during the prior year. My name is John Mohammed. I'm the chief of operations for the drowning accident rescue team, DART. To my left is Chris Kenley. He is the acting president of the drowning accident rescue team. We have- are here to support us. What we came here to discuss this morning was the proactive patrol. In 2015, we had a series of drownings, and this board, through their knowledge of the problem, and working with the drowning accident rescue team, chose to start a proactive patrol. The proactive patrol was for the prevention of drownings within the area of the confluence of the American and Sacramento Rivers. Since the date of 2015, when DART and this board joined in that relationship, DART has manned the area during the weekends and during holidays, and during that period when DART has been there, there have been zero drownings. We've been very successful, and as example, during 2017, we manned approximately 921 man-hours on the beach. In addition to that, we have prep time, setup time, cleanup time, et cetera, that goes with that, but that was actual time on scene. We made contact with 1,000 parkgoers that we fitted with PFDs, personal flotation devices. We gave classes to over 2,600 parkgoers on water safety. That water safety would include the Kids Don't Float program, as well as the life jacket look good on you, life looks good on you, that program, which boating waterways initiated in 2016. It also included self-rescue techniques, what to do when someone does drown, how to mark point last seen, et cetera. We also made personal contact with swimmers and persons we felt were in distress in the water. Many times, persons in the water don't realize they're in distress until too late. On May 29th, Memorial Weekend, we had a boat that capsized. The boat had eight people on it. There were four children and four adults. Four children all had life jackets, the four adults did not. DART was at that scene, doing proactive patrol at that time, and initiated rescue operations. We were successful, along with the cooperation of other persons that were in the area, of rescuing all eight persons out of the water, and getting the boat out of the waterway and into the shore, so it did not become a hazard to other boaters. There were no injuries. There was no loss of life in that. On May 24th, excuse me, June 24th, during rafting gone wild, we were doing proactive patrol, as well as assisting with the rafting gone wild. A female subject was trapped underwater on the American River at the 15.5 mile marker. Our personnel responded to that location, were able to excavate the victim out from subsurface position to the surface, transport her to emergency services, where she was given CPR, and survives and is living today because of that rescue.
Wow.
It is through this board's initiation and getting DART out there in a proactive method that has made this possible. I want to congratulate the board on your foresight and management of a scene in an area that was adverse to make it now user-friendly. Part of our presentation today is to encourage the board to go forth in 2019 with the same commitment that we had in 2017.
How about 2018? You want us to do it then, too?
Yes, sir. Didn't I say 2018?
You said 19.
Eighteen, too.
You're thinking ahead. You're very forward in your thinking, John.
But we would like to have the same commitment from the board. The parks was instrumental in giving DART $25,000 for the ongoing training, and the board matched that with another $25,000. It's our hope that we can get a similar commitment for 2018.
Very good.
Are there, do you have any questions of us and what we're doing?
Questions, comments, ask your supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for being here today to share with us some of the successes that DART has had with rescue and preservation of life on our river systems. You mentioned the confluence of the American and Sacramento Rivers, Tuscany Beach, Discovery Park. That resides in the district I represent, and I've had the good fortune of actually spending an afternoon with the DART team out on the water to see firsthand what it is you're doing. Not necessarily a rescue, but certainly the education part, lots of activity with the Bullhorn, letting folks know on the land side about the law that we have, the ordinance that we have here in Sacramento County, that kids 13 and under must wear a life preserver when they're in or near the water. So I was very impressed with that, and I'm glad you acknowledged the fact that we did have a number of tragedies in 2015, which really brought to light the fact that this county has a responsibility, at least in my opinion, to flank the strong volunteer effort that we have in DART, not just as it relates to recovery, but certainly being, as you mentioned, very proactive, so that we can hear more stories about successful rescues. So I just want to extend my sincerest thanks to everyone on the DART team, everyone that is involved with spending their weekends, their evenings, sometimes in the summer months, out on the water, working with our ranger force and others to make sure that Sacramento County is a safe place to be near the water, especially in the summer months. So, thank you all.
Okay, other members of the board?
I would just echo some of those comments. I think that, to the point, and certainly, John, thank you for the written presentation, certainly for you and your colleagues being here this morning, but when I hear, you know, the description of the rescues and the saves, certainly the proactive piece of it, which, again, it's hard to know how many lives are saved through that, but we know there weren't any drownings. But when it comes to actually responding to an incident where there's a capsized boat, or someone's, you know, trapped in the snags and would otherwise perish, I think it says to me that this is probably the best $50,000 Sacramento County spent as relates certainly to water safety in this community. And it's a credit to your organization, to the skills and talents, the ability to respond and to know how to respond very quickly, where minutes, if not seconds, count towards someone either being alive or not. And I think the testimony you gave here this morning is a great credit to your organization, to the fact that, obviously, you've performed not only well, but I think in a fashion that makes us all proud. And there are people that are alive this very moment because of some of the actions and quick response that you provided while you were on patrol and while you were in the area. And I know oftentimes you're called in to respond, to retrieve, to search in situations where there's a pretty good degree of certainty that someone's perished, either to a car into the river or some other terrible tragic accident. In this case, though, I think your proactive approach to it, as well as your quick response, you know, means the world. And I'm sure the folks that have called to tell you, to thank you for saving their lives, there's no price on that. I mean, again, there's no amount of money that can bring somebody back from the dead, if that's what tragically occurred, a drowning. And so, again, I want to thank you, certainly express my thanks, in addition to, obviously, others that made those comments. And the value we get is certainly speaks, spoken to in numbers, but also in the humanity and your ability to respond and save lives, and to prevent accidents from happening altogether. So, again, I just want to express my thanks as well, so. Okay, thank you so much. We can give you one more round of applause to our DART team, and we look forward to continuing.
I think Mr. Gill already just signaled he's got this in the budget for next year already, right?
I think so.
You're about six months too early here, so.
We understand that we're early, and we understand that, and what we're trying to get is the board to commit, and we understand that that commitment usually carries forward, and it's not a real issue. We are volunteers, and funding is a very crucial item for us, so that's why we're here. We also want to provide you with the information that you need, and if you need additional information, we can give you additional details on the specifics provided in the report before you.
Okay, thanks, John. Thanks. So you guys have a great holiday season. Thank you so much, so. Okay, with that, then, I think that concludes our presentations, and again, thank our DART team for being with us today, representatives. So, I'm going to call the next item. I think we're going to put this over, I believe, so go ahead and.
For item 61, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. Approval of inter-agency project agreement, acquisition loan agreement, and loan commitment for the courtyard in transit-oriented development.
Okay, I think we have some late-breaking information, and so I think we're going to continue this.
Yes, we will request to continue this till tomorrow, till 2:00 PM. We have a couple changes on the funding side that we need to work with SHRA, bring an amended staff report and a resolution for you tomorrow.
Okay, so do we need a motion to continue, or we just put this over? Need a motion? Okay, the chair would move that we continue this to tomorrow at 2:00 PM.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thanks. I think everybody understands why that was continued, and we'll be back tomorrow, and I trust we'll take action at that time. Okay, we have a few minutes in between here, between the 10:15 items, so.
Would you like to take your nominations?
If people are ready, are you ready for nominations?
That would be item 74.
Okay.
You're ready, okay. For item 74, you are continuing to January 23rd, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnis, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Paratransit Board of Directors, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, the Sacramento Environmental Commission, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, for Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters?
February 6th, thank you.
Okay. Cardova Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Natoli.
Continue to January 23rd, 2018, where we have interviews pending.
Okay, Elk Grove, Consumnis Cemetery District.
We nominate the incumbent, Philip Stark, reappointment.
And Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Mr. Natoli.
I understand that, excuse me, that chiefs have interviewed and recommending Rachel Alvarez, and also recommending that we waive the process and make the appointment. So that would be, and continue the remainder to February 6th, 2018. That would be the motion. Is that a motion? It's a motion, yes.
Okay, sorry. Unanimous vote. And then we have the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost. I show that we're continuing that to February 6th. Public Health Advisory Board, Mr. Natoli.
Okay, the chiefs of staff have interviewed and bringing forward recommendations that we nominate Philip Summers as for the community member seat, and that we also nominate and reappoint incumbents Jack Zawald, Jeffrey Rubenowitz, and Kimberly Sloan. So that would be the motion.
So we're requesting the process be waived on Summers?
On Summers only.
Yeah, that was, I'm sorry.
Unanimous vote.
Yeah, no idea.
Okay. And then we have the Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Mr. Natoli.
Okay, we have new applicants for a couple of seats for the public student rep and technical rep. Those will be continued to February 6th, 2018, but we are nominating for reappointment, once again, someone who's probably the longest-serving member in this board commission, that's Harry Carsland, who's the incumbent on that board, so that's the nomination.
Thank you. Sacramento County Youth Commission, Mr. Serna.
Please continue to February 6th.
Okay, and then we have the Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, Supervisor Peters.
I'd like to reappoint Doug Holland.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Okay, we still have about seven minutes or so, so we'll take a brief recess, and we convene at 10:15.